05, so we're gonna start five minutes late. Jeff is still called up for the military, so he won't be attending tonight. But Katie did send an email saying she's gonna be about, is it 15 or 20 minutes late? Something like that? 5:30, okay, 30 minutes, okay. All right. So we won't bother, you know, doing an absence for her, because she's expected to be here soon. So we're gonna go ahead and get into the budget. We, uh, let's see, we already did the call to order and the roll call. And so for the discussion direction, we're gonna start with the Economic Development Fund. And so we'll do that one first, and then we'll take on the rest. And so if you are here to speak to the Economic Development Fund, is that you, Rick? Can I handle that? Okay. Okay, all right. Okay, just a presentation, all right. So we'll start with that one.
The presentation overview. So we'll go over the budget schedule, follow-ups from prior workshops, and then we'll start covering the operating funds, starting with the Economic Development Fund, going to the utility funds, and then the special revenue funds will follow that. I'll give you an update on the general fund, and we'll cover other items and get council's feedback. So the budget schedule key dates, tonight, obviously July 15th, Budget Workshop Number Two, highlighted up there. In 10 days, we should receive our certified taxable values, and shortly thereafter, our truth in taxation calculation will be prepared by the Tax Assessor Collector for Guadalupe County, which Daryl John. We're scheduled to have a special meeting on July 31st to discuss the tax rate, followed by a third Budget Workshop on August 5th, if council deems it necessary. We will deliver a proposed budget on August 12th and gather additional council feedback at the following meeting. Public hearings and adoption of the budget and tax rate are expected on September 9th. From Budget Workshop Number One, City Council asked, what were the other positions requested in the general fund? Wanted to show that that was provided to City Council June 24th by email. One of the other council actions is also a list of salaries by position, along with classification pay grades, that was also provided on June 24th. The third item, provide a breakdown of training by department, that was provided more recently, last week, July 10th, by email, for both the general fund and other funds. Item four, council action regarding other cities' fund balance policies. We covered that on the presentation on July 8th. And then the fifth item from that first Budget Workshop was pay grades from Universal City and Converse to show midpoint for the same positions for the employee market study. Comparable cities listed were New Braunfels Shirts, Bernie Seguin, and Liv Oak, and we did include the preliminary information in the presentation on July 8th. From the July 8th council workshop, there are three items that resulted in in council action or providing more information, feedback from council, rethinking the city's fund balance reserve policy. The City Council approved by motion to modify the city's policy from 28% to 25% effective for fiscal year '26 by a vote of 6 to 0. The employee market compensation study and COLA for fiscal year '26, City Council approved by motion to move affected employees to 100% of market with a 3% COLA for all other employees not eligible for market as funds are available. That was voted 5 to 0. Fleet replacement plan and five-year CIP, City Council approved by motion to support the fleet replacement as presented for police, fire, and public works with a vote of 6 to 0. As we go through the presentation, we will be seeking your direction tonight and feedback on operating funds as indicated on these next two slides that you have in your packet. And I won't go through each of those questions now, but keep those in mind as we go through the presentation. So Economic Development Corporation. The Economic Development Corporation is a 4B corporation, which is not only authorized to fund projects related to industrial development in the furtherance of primary jobs, but can also fund quality-of-life improvement projects, including infrastructure improvements. The corporation is funded by a quarter cent sales tax, which was first authorized by the voters in November of 2006. And this chart in front of you highlights sales tax growth over the last 20 years. The first full year of sales tax totaled 118,700 and has grown to more than 12 times that. Highlights of the fiscal year '26 EDC budget include continued growth in sales tax projected at 7% over fiscal year '25, the new Edge Grant Opportunities for Small Business. Edge stands for Economic Development for Growth and Enhancement, and is similar to the BIG grant, but adds permits, fees, and other special circumstances to eligible costs. The fiscal year '26 budget adds $25,000 to grant opportunities, taking it from $75,000 in fiscal year '25 to $100,000 in fiscal year '26. $75,000 was also allocated for strategic plan implementation. There are master professional services agreements that have been recently put in place in fiscal year '25 to begin this work. And the EDC budget also includes $250,000 in funding a parks master plan. This slide shows fiscal year '24 through fiscal year '26 proposed. In each year presented, revenues surpassed expenditures, contributing to the growing fund balance. The fiscal year '26 budget projects revenues of $1.5 million and expenses of $1.2 million, which will add over $300,000 to the fund balance, bringing the projected year in total to over $3.1 million in the Economic Development Corporation. We do have members of the board here, and I don't, I would like to give them an opportunity to speak to council if they'd like to, or if council has any questions for them. I know you want to start with this fund, and you may want to take questions or direct questions to the EDC board on it. Does anybody have any questions?
Come on up.
Good evening, council. Marcus Mattingly.
Hey, Marcus.
Hello. I don't really have anything additional to add. However, if you do have any questions, I'll be more than welcome to answer them at this time to the best of my ability. Just to let you know, Thursday, in a couple of days, we'll be going through the budget a little bit more itemized. But, so any questions on the top three items that Miranda discussed?
If we want to hit the, uh, the feedback slides for just the EDC, so that Mr. Mattingly can be present to hear any of the feedback, the items really are just, you know, does council agree with the EDC program and projects as presented? So the additional funding for grants, the Parks Master Plan that's included in, in the budget, and the strategic plan implementation. If council's in agreement with that, then we can answer that question now.
Everybody okay with those three items? Yes, okay.
You don't have to, you don't have to, you don't have to say if you don't.
Okay.
If you don't want to, but of course, you're welcome.
Thank you, I appreciate it. All right, you guys have a lovely evening.
Thank you, Marcus. Okay.
And I'll be at the Thursday, Thursday. Development Services Fund. Fiscal year '25 marked the creation of the Development Services Fund, allowing us to track development activities independently of the general fund. The focus this year is on optimizing workflows to provide more streamlined services and foster greater collaboration among departments. We recognize that while Sibolo's development growth is steady, it remains sensitive to fluctuations in the economic housing market. This chart reflects annual totals for new home permits. While fiscal year '25 has been somewhat slower than other years, we do expect close to 250 new home permits to be processed this year. This is approximately 67% of the average over the last 12 years.
Was that 250 total or 250 more on top of the 150?
250 total.
Thank you.
So the 158 goes through June, and we have three, three months remaining in this fiscal year.
And what's the slowdown for, just the amount of neighborhoods that are building now? Not as many?
The number of lots that have been available in addition to just economic fluctuations. This chart, this next chart, shows permits by month over the last three years. I do want to make note that one of the primary builders was low, they were low on buildable lots on their inventory, and that, that began in May of 2024. They were averaging more than half of the new home permits in 2024. So as lots became available to them, when Unit 6 was approved by council this year, we've seen an uptick in permits. And so the, kind of the aqua color there, the greenish blue, the last one, you can see the uptick beginning in March, where in February, we had eight building, eight new home permits, and then in March went up to 28, 25 in April, 32 in May, 32 in June, and we expect that to continue for July, August, and September.
Councilman Mahoney has a question.
Well, just, just a statement I want to share with council members. I was at a meeting where Mr. John was asked a question about housing permits and growth in the county, population, et cetera, et cetera. And he explained, I won't, I won't do justice to his explanation, but he explained pretty clearly and concisely that the county's infrastructure is also kind of a limit, that somewhere around 5,000 per year or something is sort of like a breaking point. And that's also the feeling of a lot of the builders and people. They won't say that in public, but there's just kind of a limit based on the labor pool, number of permits, all these things, that it won't just keep climbing exponentially just because the population is. Wanted to share that.
Right. That makes sense. Inflation? Oh, the interest rate on home buyers, right. I know a lot of the, uh, a lot of the builders are able to offer good interest rate discounts, right? They're buying it down for you, it's probably added onto the price, but they are offering better interest rates than if you went out into the market yourself for a mortgage. So the Development Services Fund summary. Due to the downturn that we've experienced earlier in the year, our revised estimate of revenue for fiscal year '25 is approximately 67% of the original budget, which was built on the average. The fiscal year '26 budget has been projected more conservatively at 85% of the average. The fiscal year '26 Development Services budget also includes $25,000 for market adjustments and 3% COLA for staff, beginning in January. Both FY '25 and FY '26 reflect revenues exceeding expenses of the fund, and fund balance at the end of '26 is projected to be $341,000. We'll move into our Water, Wastewater Utility Fund. Utility rate study is underway. We contracted with Willdam Financial Services, and we've provided the requested information. We recommend waiting on the results of the study to determine any rate adjustments for water services. The fiscal year '26 budget does, however, include a 2% rate adjustment on wastewater rates as a pass-through for the 2% rate adjustment from CCMA. I want to note that the fiscal year '26 budget includes a $1 million set aside for future water acquisition to replace crystal clear, crystal clear water, and $100,000 for a consultant that specializes in water topics. The budget also includes a change in the franchise fees for water and wastewater services. The franchise fee to the general fund will be 4% of revenues in FY '26. And under the new solid waste franchise agreement, large commercial contracts will be managed and billed by Waste Connections. The 10% franchise fee will be retained by the general fund, just as any other franchise fee in the city is. For residential customers and small commercial accounts, city staff will continue to prepare the billing statements, and 40% of the franchise fee will be retained by the utility fund, with 60% going to the general fund. The FY '26 budget also includes $32,000 for market compensation and COLA adjustments, beginning in January. This slide goes further into the details for water consultant. The consultant would assist with long-term water usage and water reserve projections, alternative water resources to CRWA to diversify the city's resources, the appraisal of CVLGC groundwater lease permits, and coordination with TCEQ on the city's alternative capacity requirements. Looking at the summary for the Water, Wastewater Fund, revenues are projected to decrease by 1.6% from the prior year. This is a reflection of the change in our solid waste franchise agreement. Revenues from dumpsters and compacters will no longer be reflected in, in our utility fund. Waste Connections will be billing this directly to the customer. For reference, the original budget for commercial solid waste was $1.5 million in FY '25, when we were doing the billing for it. The reduced revenues in fiscal year '25 is also mostly related to the new agreement, since it begins July 28th and will impact the last two months of '25. The reduction is offset by reduced payments to the contractor for the services that they will be billing directly to the customer, and will receive the 10% franchise fee. In addition to the $100,000 for water consultant, other increases in services include a $200,000 payment to CCMA for the first tranche of debt to be issued in fiscal year '26 in furtherance of the south plant expansion, and $49,000 for drought contingency and water conservation plan update. We're projecting $19.1 million in total revenue, $19.9 million in total expenses. This budget anticipates a $779,000 decrease to our fund balance, which accounts for the $1 million we've set aside for future, future water acquisition. Despite this, our, our ending fund balance is still a healthy $9.3 million.
Ms. Miranda, so for two months, it's, we're gonna lose 1.8 for two months? And the total is, if we go back this slide.
Yeah, is there any way to cut some of those expenses, so it at least breaks even?
Well, no, I mean, I'm just saying that for two months, cost is, is 1.8 we're gonna be saving, but we've gone through 10 months.
Are you looking at the fiscal year '25 budget and the end of year estimate? The 1.8 million saved?
Yes.
Is actually, from original budget to end of year estimate, we're saving, we budgeted 1.8 million for future water acquisition. It was also a holding spot, a set aside when we lost crystal clear water. So it was set aside, we haven't had to make any water acquisitions, but we will have to make them. So we're setting aside this funding?
Okay.
So that it is kind of a holding spot in our budget until we, until we know what it is. And so that's the savings from the original to the end of year. I wanted to show fiscal year '24, '25, and '26 by category, by revenue category, so you can see what some of the differences are. So fiscal year '25, end of year estimates show reductions from original for water due to the exceptionally rainy season we've had. So the first few months this summer have been lower, lower consumption than last year at this same time. And you, that's reflected in both water sales residential and water sales commercial, where the projection for revenue in '25 is higher than the end of year projection. And then '26, you see a slight increase due to population increases. Wastewater, you see a steady increase in both residential and commercial. And then solid waste services, you see, the residential, you see that spike that happens in '26 because of the years that we've not made any adjustments to those rates. So customers, residential and commercial customers will see an increase in their solid waste, as we've discussed at prior meetings. In solid waste services, commercial, you see that revenue drop off completely for the fiscal year '26. So Waste Connections will be billing that, collecting that, and we'll just see the franchise revenue in the general fund for that. The wastewater rate change that we are recommending, 2%, is a pass-through from CCMA. They're raising their rates to us by 2%. The impact to the average customer, I highlighted 6,000 there, is 71 cents on their monthly wastewater bill. Also in the packet, you have, any, anything you see in red on my slides was a correction made from when the packet was issued to you. So I updated the fiscal year columns there.
That's not including, and I know that they haven't gone out to their bond council yet, but that's a raise, but that's not including the raise that they're in need for building the south plant, or expansion of the south plant.
That's exactly right. And I have a slide for that as well.
Okay.
Canyon Regional Water Authority, CRWA as we call it. We did receive their budget last week, and I wanted to note the following increases. So it was a 5% increase in raw water costs, which is set by GBRA, Guadalupe Blanco River Authority. They're proposing a 3% merit and 3% COLA for their staff, three new administrative positions, 3% increase in chemicals and utilities, 10, 10 to 17% in their property and liability insurance costs, and 121% increase in repair and replacement funds. So that was the large, the large hit. The repair and replacement fund is, was set up for $11 million for major items, including a $2 million Lake Dunlap Strainer project and Wells Ranch Emergency Generator project for $3.8 million. And those contracts were approved in fiscal year '25 and will be funded in FY '26 and passed along to, to us, the members. I did just get an email that my September 10th date, that I assumed is actually August 11th. So they are looking at adopting their budget in August this year. Sibolo Creek Municipal Authority, at the joint meeting with CCMA, the question was asked about the impact to our customers for the debt for the south plant expansion. The table up there shows option two of that debt, which is the larger expansion, and it shows the anticipated costs to Sibolo. This would be Sibolo's share. And it is spread across, you know, 30 years, and the highest, the highest years are about 2.5 million, $2.6 million. If we were to divide that cost amongst all of our existing customers, which is number 11,556, it would cost approximately $1849 monthly for each of those customers. We know we're gonna see growth in customers, so that's a worst-case scenario. We could also calculate the cost by consumption, so 77.9 million gallons each month, allocating the debt service based on the consumption, would increase fees by $2.74 per thousand gallons. And a customer who has a 6,000 gallon average bill would see an increase of $1647 monthly. Now, I believe that CCMA will also be using their impact fees for some of the cost, so this is a, is a worst-case estimate.
Now, would that consumption be for everybody, or only the people whose waste actually goes to this plant? Because there are people in, you know, Sibolo that, that aren't sending, you know.
Right. All, all of the flows to this plant, those customers don't exist yet.
Exactly. So I'm just saying, if, maybe if we put it on the new customers exclusively.
Right. It, it will spread the cost even more, across more customers, if we spread it across all customers. But this is the cost against existing customers. And you're right, the flows, their flows don't go to this.
Nothing goes there.
New plant.
Okay. Thank you.
But Mayor, would, I mean, I know you're very much aware of what a neighboring entity did to us, and you have.
We're, we're going to look at alternative ways of billing it so that only the impacted customers are paying that. But, but that's, there are a lot of variables there, right? With future development and the timing of future development, as well as timing of the construction of the plant. So there's a lot to consider in the next five years or so, as this is being developed. Build it, and they will come, is the phrase I've heard, though, right? Drainage Utility District. We're not proposing any changes to fees this year. Our fiscal year '26 budget includes $18,000 for 3% cost of living increase, includes additional funding for engineering services to evaluate drainage flow to detention pond at the Public Works Facility, and includes drawdown of fund balance for capital equipment, specifically the Timco Model 435 street sweeper. That was presented at the last meeting. Showing the Drainage Utility District summary, the fiscal year '25 original budget did reflect a drawdown of fund balance by $400,000 for one-time costs. Those one-time costs included equipment of $217,000, the drainage DCM update for $49,000, and $150,000 for our match on a grant application for a drainage master plan. The grant was not awarded, and the $150,000 was not spent. And so that's part of the savings that you see in the end of year estimate. Our end of year estimate also includes an increase in commercial drainage revenue, which is a combination of our auditing efforts to, to get all the impervious coverage reflected accurately on all commercial businesses and overall growth in our commercial base. Fiscal year '26 revenues reflect continued growth in our customer base, while the change column reflects 12.9% increase over fiscal year '25. The change from end of year estimate is, is really only 4%. Overall expenses are down 2.9% from the original fiscal year '25 budget due to the reduction in services related to the grant match that I mentioned earlier for the drainage master plan. This chart reflects that in fiscal year '26, projected commercial drainage revenue makes up 29% of all drainage revenue in, in total. For reference, in 2011, the year of inception, commercial drainage only made up 16% of all drainage revenue. Again, for reference, if we eliminated caps or tiers, commercial customers would generate an additional $68,000 in revenue annually and make up 32% of total drainage revenue. Right now, our commercial rate structure is tiered so that those large, larger businesses aren't as impacted to the full extent for ERU as they could be.
I'd like to see what we can do about the cost, so that way we're not operating at a loss. If you go back a slide, you know, so if that means we need to somehow increase our revenue by 162,000 somehow, I think that's what we need to do. Just operating at a loss is not sustainable.
I, I do want to, I do want, that's exactly true. But I do want to mention that the, that the drawdown in fund balance is related to a one-time cost of the, of the street sweeper. So I don't want to, I don't want you to be alarmed when you see that. I am going to let Mr. Huggins cover the next few slides related to an email that was sent prior.
Thank you, ma'am.
You don't need my notes.
I did. Good evening, Mayor and council. So I forwarded you a copy of a letter from Mr. Gary Woods, who owns Woods Storage here in Sibolo, regarding his drainage fees that he has to pay monthly and obviously an annual cost to his business for the amount of acreage he has to run his storage facility. He's been here quite some time, and a lot of his property is covered by Caliche. He has some that's covered by concrete, but some that's covered by Caliche. He has some that's covered by concrete, but some that's covered by Kalachi. And through the years of his business, he's seen an increase in the drainage fees he has to pay because he has such a large piece of property, eight acres related to a commercial business. So currently, Mr. Woods is paying seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty cents for his monthly drainage fees. He's asking council tonight to consider modifying the methodology for drainage fees for his business, because when you start looking at other businesses within the city, you have such a large piece of property they operate on, you're looking at the Walmarts, the HEBs, those large businesses who've taken considerably more monthly revenue than does he. So there's a process that we use, a total equivalent residential unit calculation form that we come up with to come up with that monthly fee, seven point five, seven dollars and fifty cents per ERU, and he has a hundred and two ERUs based on the size of his property, which totals to seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and forty cents a month he has to pay. So again, looking at his property, he's right there off eleven oh three by the post office area. He has some concrete surface, which is impervious, and then he has some Kalachi surface, which, when you look at fast, heavy rains, Kalachi's impervious, it hits and runs off. If you have a slow rain, it has a tendency to soak in some of that water somewhat. So actually, Mr. Woods is here tonight, if you'd like to hear him kind of give you his thoughts on this idea here, being that he is the one that asked for a consideration on this matter.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind hearing from him, but as long as we're operating at a loss, I definitely can't see us reducing fees. If anything, we should probably increase them, but I'd be happy to hear from him.
Okay, Mr. Woods, if you'd like to come up to the podium, sir.
Thank you.
Let me go back aside so you can actually show your property there.
How about that?
I'm Gary Woods. I'm the owner of Woods Storage, and, well, I think we've been here twenty-eight years now. And when we first got here, there was no fee until, I guess, eleven. But what I'm trying to put forward, you have small businesses, and I'm going to, as an example, say, you've got the Sonic, you've got Catalinos, you've got Harmon's Barbecue, and then our storage, we're all small, we make, I'm going to say, a hundred dollars a year. The difference is, I come in now, I can't make that because I'm over here in a category of this large area that's comparing me essentially financially to Walmart. And I would say this, Walmart makes more money in four days than I do all year, so it's really killing us. I need to see if in this workshop, we can do something that would say, you are a small business and you're land-intensive, and I've looked at your tier sections, but that doesn't seem to want to break out. How do you show that we are just a small business? Actually, I'd say we're micro, but it doesn't show how we do that. The way it throws us in, we're competing against Walmart and all these other national companies. So it's almost to the point now where I just saw the presentation, to me, last year up to November, we were four hundred a month, and then it didn't increase three percent. It went up almost a hundred percent to seven hundred something now. That's nine thousand six hundred dollars a year. And now I just hear, hey, we need to increase it some more. You have a storage glut. Over four years ago, when the economy was good, people were building too many storages out here, and all these national companies are here. The last four years, I would say this, the economy has not been good, and the storage hurts, so these national companies can lower price. I see the other things you have that say one percent here, one percent for personnel. We haven't had a pay raise in four years, and last year, because the national companies lowered their price, we're losing. We're not getting this and that and everything going up. So you can see where, over time, it's going to almost run us out of business. I mean, we can't raise rates. You say, hey, three percent, we can't raise our rates three percent, we won't get any business. And being in a glut, that's just back to life out here. So if y'all have any questions, I'd be more than happy, and I guess really what I'm asking is some way to keep us in a small business in that tier system that, you know, I don't know how you do it, less than two hundred thousand makes less than five hundred, whatever. But the other thing about when Walmart showed up way back, our taxes, property tax, went from two thousand to four, then to six, then to eight, up to thirty, and finally, the tax appraiser over there at his office, putting us on a system, I don't know what it is, but what it does, it looks at your income levels. And in other words, I can't compete against Walmart across the street, so he's got me being taxed based on our income. So I don't know how to put that into your system, you know, for some consideration that we don't, it'd be like right now, if we kept getting taxed like Walmart, we'd be gone by now, so.
Right. And, you know, I kind of look at self-storage as a good placeholder business, you know, when a town is maybe, let's just say back when Sibolo was six thousand people versus where we're at now, where we're more than six X compared to that. And so I think it makes sense as a good use of land, you know, when the, when the city is growing, but now that the city is at the size we're at right now, I'm assuming you own the land, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm the one who sold the ten acres to the other place.
Gotcha, okay.
I sold that off.
So as the landowner, I could see, you know, if you were to maybe rezonate and do something else, you know, maybe put in a, you know, a retail establishment here, you could probably make a lot more money, you know? So that's just my thought. Got some money?
Yeah, Mr. Woods, I just have a hypothetical kind of question. Have you thought about other business models? Have you investigated changing everything and creating a whole new environment? Because...
Yes, sir. Here's what I would say. We own the twenty-two, we sold the ten acres from the Borkfield back for the new place. I'm about ready to retire. And I've already got another farm out there that's got a hay thing, half of this is under, what do you call it, ag. Before I would take all the risk of new fees and having to fool with everything, I'd just say, let's tear it down, spend four or five years, put it back under ag, and I'll just get another check off of this and be retired. There is a problem with that. I know you're getting a percentage of, I don't know what it is, you don't get the whole thirty thousand, but when it goes back under ag, it's two hundred dollars, so that city ain't going to get much out of that either. So, I mean, you'd say, hey, what are you getting now? What would we get if we went that direction? And I'm not trying to say that like, hey, I'm just getting to the point where I come out to work, take money in, hand money out, and why did I go to work for today? I'm not making anything.
Right.
And I hear what you're saying, hey, that was good business, but, you know, that's almost like, may sound hard, of the government trying to tell you how you should come in business. If you've got a business, you make money, that's fine. And if it was today and I came out here and said, I'm going to put this up, and hey, you got these fees, I understand, but when we came out and did that, we paid all the stuff that was required, there was no fee. And since it's come in, I mean, even when we started, it was capped, and that's just gone to the wind. Everybody, we need more money, and we just can't grow like that.
Well, I think, I think where I'm coming from is the thought, and I've never owned a business, can't identify with some of the stress and expenses, but I'm thinking there's a lot of folks in the city that would look at this and say, what, what is, why are you locked into never changing anything? I respect twenty-eight years in the same business, in the same spot, but a lot of people would say, you someday got to evolve with the community.
I hear you.
And give up perhaps something that you...
Well, yeah, no, okay. We have another business over Hus Farnor Viking, we own the dealership on the other side of San Antonio. Also got a farm out here between Marion and McQueenie that does a hay thing. And when I say I'm retiring, I've got three U.S. government sources of retirement income coming in, I've got social security coming in, got that, got the other store that's running, my job basically to keep up with it all, and I'm kind of getting to the point, and I know what you're saying, but you've got now valued over a million dollars worth of stuff to say, come in at seventy years old, going to tear all this down and rebuild. It'd probably do okay if we didn't have all these people, and that sounds bad. We started building, nobody came and said, here, it's a tax break or anything, and then all of a sudden, it's like, hey, you must be making money, I'm going to put my hand in your pocket, we can get some more, get some more. All the employees at the city, I think, probably in the last year, got a one percent pay raise, over the last four years, got something. We didn't get it. And I see your files appear right now, hey, we can raise three more percent. I mean, how are we going to do that? We can't.
Yeah, I think with eleven oh three getting expanded from two lanes to four lanes, all the way from thirty-five to seventy-eight, and I know that the commercial real estate market is really hot right now, so I've got a feeling if you were to put this on the market, and I know McDonald's...
It is on the market.
McDonald's is chomping at the bit, you know, to be in this area.
Don't get me wrong, that piece that's over next to the Sonic is on the market.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I saw that, I saw that, yes. That's your land, too?
Yeah. But it's just like anything else, just like the ten acres, we went through six or seven years with, well, our members don't work, we'll offer you this, I'm like, ain't for sale, man.
Yeah, I think this is a strategically located, prime piece of real estate. I think you could do really well if somebody were to, you know, the right buyer were to come along and want to do commercial on it. I think you would do really well if you had...
Well, yeah, and what I say, off the ten acres, I already made my retirement.
Got you, okay.
You know what I'm saying? I'm not trying to make another retirement, I already made one. And this one here, we're just trying to figure out, we'd like to keep it up, like to keep it running. Over the past years, we've, when I say in the city, just this last year, we had a thing, I can't remember what it's called, with a high school girl, glee club or something, we gave them free storage. The police department has gotten free storage over the years for their Blue Santa stuff. Back when you had the motorcycles, we gave them free storage, you know, to put them in because they didn't at the old station have a place to put it. So I think we've always done something, you know, we're not just like here, we're going to be here and make money and run off or anything, so I guess on this, we're just trying to make a consideration. Even way back when this started at eleven, we had an agreement, we graded everything to flow off on our field, not directly in. I think they ended up giving us a twenty, thirty percent discount that we found out the other day hadn't been discounted in years. I don't know when it stopped. I think we changed personnel too often to keep up with that, but, so I think we've always tried to work, but if you can imagine, if you went from four hundred dollars to eight hundred bucks, that's still a three percent, that's a hundred percent raise to me. And I've even been told, well, that's not a tax, it's a fee, and I got to tell you, I don't care what you call it, money out of my pocket, you know? And at the end of the year, and I go down here and I look at Harmon's or Catalinos, and I guess I'm going to say they're paying on the, what, acre and a half that they're on, but you built that city parking lot that most of their customers have go, they're coming through, so they're not even paying for their customers' parking. I'm not dropping a dime on them, but I'm just saying, you've helped other folks, I'm just, if we could be considered a small business, yeah, we'd sense it. Somehow put a cap on it, which is, when they first started this back in, I guess, eleven, start out four hundred dollars, I mean, it was terrible, it's just us and the guy that was over across the street where the trailers are now. So they came back and just put a hundred dollar cap on them, so that stayed for many years that way. I don't know what you can do, I don't understand y'all's system, but if there's some way to recognize we are land-intensive, but we're still small, kind of like the appraiser, hey, they don't make as much money, they have big land use like Walmart, but they don't make that kind of money. So cap it, put us in, create another tier group or something. I don't know what to, what to ask you to do.
And Miranda, I got a question for you or Mr. Huggins. The other storage unit that's right down from him, right next to Eric's Tacos, or that's what it is, Sibolo Storage, are they having to pay the same amount because they're the same type of business and they really don't have no Kalachi on it? Theirs is mainly, they might have a little bit of Kalachi, not just them, but...
You talking about the old Tally place down there on eleven oh three?
Do you know the name, do you know the name of that?
It's Sibolo Storage. It's right...
By Walmart?
No, no.
Straight down eleven oh three.
It's on eleven oh three, it's right next to you, and then, or even the Republic, because both of them, because I know Republic does their demolition right there, you know what I'm talking about?
Containers.
Yeah. And they're the same type. Are they paying the same kind of fees as well? I mean...
It's, it's based on impervious, impervious coverage, so the measure of that, and...
Well, that would be the Sibolo Storage.
There's one called Colossal Storage.
Zixolosso?
No. No.
And that one is three hundred dollars less than this, but the impervious coverage is substantially less as well. So they're in the same tier, where it's charging seven dollars and fifty cents per ERU, and...
What about Republic, right there, down eleven oh three, across eleven oh three?
Republic?
It's, so you have Eric's Tacos and then...
I'm talking about another spot.
Oh, okay.
I know that, that one that you were first mentioning, they do have a lot of Kalachi laid down, and that's really all expected, because I had a source of that over there.
Well, my parents did, too.
So...
It's the same as like this.
Age, age industries, independent rough terrain.
No, that's further down.
Buffalo Heights, um...
This is on, next to Gulf Street.
I'm going to try to look up the address so she can get it.
Oh, okay. I'm just wondering, because I know that they are, both of them, their impervious coverage would be the entire lot of theirs, because it's right behind the lady that comes in all the time complaining about the noise complaints. I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, because I know Republic isn't small, but I know he is, I know that Sibolo Storage is a small business.
So in the last twelve months, in the last probably six to twelve months, GIS has worked on calculating impervious coverage for all of these commercial businesses, and all of those were, were entered into the system to calculate the new rates.
Because we could even go out here to the new RV spot, and it's about the same size as this, and theirs, almost all of it is asphalt or concrete or Kalachi out there. Fun Town RV. I mean...
Do you have that address? Is it on Schneider?
Where the old Timber Tech is.
It's on seventy-eight.
Ten twenty-one Schneider?
I'm just, I, I feel you, you know, I, you've got a business and you want to stay in business, I understand that. I'm just trying to figure out, you know, we've got other businesses that are around that are like yours, I mean, how much are they paying compared to what you're having to pay? I'm just trying to figure that out.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to get more to is, it's sort of like the appraiser does it, if, he says, okay, here's, you might have the all same across there, and just like you've got us and Walmart and the buildings all the same, but he basically, what kind of income do you generate? And then he appraises it off of that.
U.S. technology?
And that's where he puts his, I call it equity factor in there, because if they taxed us like they taxed Walmart, we'd have been gone by now. We wouldn't even make enough money to pay the taxes, I don't think.
All right. Any other questions, Donata? Do you have anything?
No.
Randy, do you have anything? Katie?
Move it Storage?
All right.
Does that answer? If not, I stick around if you want to ask her.
No, I, yeah, well, we definitely hear you and we understand where you're coming from.
Okay.
So, thank you, sir.
Does that answer? If, if not, I stick around if you wanna ask her.
No, I, yeah, well, we, we, uh, we definitely hear you and we, we understand where you're coming from.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, appreciate it, appreciate it.
Cause I, I mean, th- this whole property here would be all impervious coverage. And I know that since this is, and most of that is all, I'm talking about this. I'm like this storage unit right here. This is storage. It's on eleven oh three, huge Eric's Tacos right here. Yeah, it's Sibolo Storage, that's what it's called.
Their business name is not always the same as their customer name, so the address is easier to find it with, but.
Three twenty-five? Republic.
Eagle S W S.
Yeah, it's the Eagle.
Yep.
Yeah, they're at four ninety, so their purpose coverage is the E R Us.
I'm gonna leave that one compared to.
It's sixty-five. Sixty-five E R Us. Compared to a hundred and one E R Us.
That's Colicchi. And it is right there. I understand it's smaller, but I'm just, and then you look at this.
And so it is, it's based, yeah, it is based on the size of the purpose.
Okay, so we can move on.
Thank you, Council, that's, he just wanted to come in and see what you thought about it, so, appreciate your opportunity to discuss this with him. Turn it back over to Ms. Anna, uh, Miranda for the special revenue funds.
Special revenue funds account for the proceeds of specific revenue sources that are restricted or committed to expenditures for a specified purpose. There are eighteen special revenue funds that we're, that we're budgeting. Our projected beginning fund balances across these eighteen funds is twenty-four point six million, with approximately eighty-five percent in impact fee funds, including park fees. The Sibolo Public Facility Corporation at two point five million is ten percent of the total, and the remaining twelve funds make up the remaining five percent. We won't review each of these in detail, but we'll hit the funds that make up the ninety-five percent, as well as, as the special events fund and the street maintenance tax fund. Um, I corrected some mathematical errors on this, on this table. Uh, this slide shows a breakdown of the events funded in the special events fund, Sibolo Fest and Downtown Market Days. We've budgeted for higher ticketing revenue for Sibolo Fest, uh, through a recommended increase in the pricing for wristbands. The wristband does provide all-day access to the petting zoo and the carnival. And this year's carnival features more rides and activities than before, with, our, our goal is to eventually set ticket prices that fully cover the cost of, of these attractions. So for, for reference, the ten dollar price that we're recommending is the average cost of a child's movie ticket in the area, and the city asserts charged twenty-five dollars for their wristbands at the last Jubilee. I did wonder, show that the ticketing at twenty-five thousand is intended to eventually cover the cost of forty-four thousand five hundred for the carnival and the petting zoo. Total revenues of ninety-five thousand support total expenses of ninety-five thousand. The revenues do include a thirty thousand dollar transfer from the general fund, so the general fund is subsidizing the event by thirty thousand dollars. The street maintenance fund um, is supported by a quarter cent sales tax, which must be approved by the voters every four years. In fiscal year twenty-six, we anticipate that sales tax revenues combined with a portion of fund balance will fund a debt service payment of approximately eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, and street maintenance of seven hundred and fifty thousand. Sales tax growth of five percent will support an average of six hundred and fifty thousand in street maintenance over the next five years. This will increase to over one point five million after, after debt is retired in fiscal year thirty. So fiscal year thirty is the last year of debt payments on the bonds that were issued in twenty twenty, twenty nineteen. Impact fee study is currently in process by Freezer Nichols. Um, currently, we are committing eight point five million for the Tully project from transportation, drainage, way, and the wastewater impact fee funds. Uh, where, in addition to Tully Road, other projects in these funds include wastewater line extensions and expansions of the trail system. Sibolo Public Facility Corporation, it has a balance of approximately two point five million after funding the acquisition and renovation of the facility formerly known as the Noble Event Center. From the two point five million balance and interest earnings, the fiscal year twenty-five end-of-year estimate includes thirty-six hundred for Parks and Recreation Commission events. And the F Y twenty-six budget includes two hundred and fifty thousand for phase-two renovations of the facility and three thousand for Parks and Recreation, uh, Commission events. The ending fund balance is projected to be two point three million available for future one-time costs. Uh, I wanna make note that the fund is earning approximately a hundred thousand annually in investment income. Phase-two renovations will include, uh, the addition of walls to create more office space, adding a break room, adding secure doorways, and a production green room, uh, furniture fixture and equipment for offices, and H B A C improvements. Like to also give you a general fund update from the last time that we spoke about it. Uh, some adjustment, some adjustments have been made to both revenues and expenses to get us closer to a balanced budget. The more significant items are shown on this slide. As mentioned in the utility fund discussion, the new solid waste franchise agreement generates additional franchise revenue that will be allocated to the general fund. Waste Connections will be handling the commercial building, uh, the commercial billing, and the ten percent franchise fee will be fully recognized in the general fund. Franchise fees from the services billed by our utility billing department will be split sixty, forty between the general fund and utility fund respectively. The fiscal year twenty-six budget includes three hundred and fifty thousand for market and cola adjustments, which would begin in January. And reductions that have, have been made include the list shown on this slide, which totaled three hundred thousand. The result of the adjustments, uh, increased revenue by two hundred and sixty-two thousand. And this side, this slide shows the detail of the increases by category. A hundred and forty in franchise fees, thirty thousand in, uh, permits, licenses, and fees, fifty-five hundred in animal services, um, twenty-eight thousand five hundred in interest and miscellaneous revenue, parks and grants for nineteen thousand five hundred, and intergovernmental and transfers for thirty-nine thousand. This pie chart reflects that seventy-five percent of our revenue comes from the two sources, property tax and sales tax. Uh, we've been fortunate to have seen strong and stable growth in both of these areas for the last ten years. Uh, transfers and intergovernmental revenues make up fifteen percent, with all other revenues in the general fund making up just ten percent of the budget. As a measure of commercial growth in the city, along with population growth, our sales tax revenue in the general fund has gone from just under a million in twenty fifteen to five point five million in twenty twenty-five. I would like to highlight that we have added eighty-nine new businesses over the last twenty-four to thirty-six months that contribute to the sales tax. General fund expenses, um, adjustments to expenses for fiscal year twenty-six as we work to balance our budget has resulted in a decrease of ninety-three thousand, or just, uh, to just under twenty-five million. These adjustments have gotten us to a twenty-six point three percent fund balance. I wanna emphasize, um, through this chart, that, that sixty-eight point six percent of the twenty-five million dollar budget, or seventeen point one million, is salaries and benefits related to the services provided to the citizens through the general fund. So public safety and public works primarily, uh, as well as animal services and, uh, all of the administrative services. We're gonna move on to other items, and I'll let Mr. Huggins, um, cover the last, uh, the last several slides.
Thank you, ma'am. So one of the other, uh, items that we wanted to talk about was the, uh, federal grant consultant. I believe, uh, Mr. Hicks and, uh, Ms. Sanchez Stevens introduced, uh, Mr. Reed to this, uh, gentleman who talked about getting some, uh, grant funding, federal grant funding for, uh, the sports complex. Yeah, so, uh, what he's proposing is a fifty thousand dollar, uh, set aside for, uh, this federal grant consultant, if it's something that y'all think they would like to do. Um, he obviously can't guarantee any, uh, funding for us, but he's thinking that he could get us somewhere in the neighborhood of five hundred thousand to two million dollars in federal funding, uh, through congressionally district, or congressionally directed spending. So the scope of his work, he laid out would be some federal funding strategy and education, uh, developing really a roadmap for Sibolo to get some of this, uh, infrastructure, broadband, water, uh, public safety funding. Um, direct advocacy and relationship building, you know, meeting with, uh, the, the Congress folks up in, in Washington, D.C., and seeing if we can build some of these relationships with them, so they get to know Sibolo, not just know the name. Policy advocacy support, uh, uh, providing, uh, updates quarterly, uh, about legislative actions that, uh, could benefit the city of Sibolo. Uh, an annual meeting in Washington, D.C., where actually go up there and meet, uh, different Congress folks, uh, from, from Washington, and, and build their relationships personally, and then some strategic, uh, guidance. You know, so, he, he knows these programs, uh, much better than, than do we, and understands, uh, the funding that's out there, and maybe how he can leverage some of our, uh, programs that we have here in, in, in Sibolo to garner some of this federal funding. Talk, we asked him for references, and, uh, so this is a list of the cities that he's worked with, uh, as you can see, just about all of them are in California.
So, uh, so before we do this, I would like to get a list of, of really specific things that we have in mind that we're looking for funding for, you know what I mean? Cause I think if we try to keep it too general and just say, hey, go get us money, I think if we had some, like a list of very specific projects that we think.
You have some ideas of what, you know, what other cities, our size, our area, you know, what, what they've looked at and, and what funding they've received? Cause when you look at, at this list here, anywhere from a, a fire ladder truck, calm down, chief, uh, to, uh, solar, solar panels, uh, water infrastructure upgrades, uh, new fire stations, so there's, it runs the gamut.
Okay.
There's lots of different projects that we're gonna be working on over the next five to six years, right? So, we can definitely look at that and see what he's, his thoughts are on, you know, could you think that this project would, would maybe benefit from some federal funding? Do you think you could get that, so, we can definitely get that to you?
Okay, so, yeah, let, let, let's do that, let's see if we can brainstorm with him and, and get together just a list, it doesn't have to be crazy long, but maybe just somewhere between five and ten things that we think would be, um, eligible for federal funding, and then that'll help us, you know, get us, get us excited about it, cause it'll have an end goal in mind of what we can get.
Yes, sir.
I do have a quick question.
Ms. Ma'am.
All this information that you're providing here, federal, is all, other than one, is out of California, and that's pretty close to California.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I mean, does he know Sibolo himself? I mean, is he familiar with some of the trials and tribulations that we have here in Texas, that they may not have in California? Cause they have completely different areas that they need help with than what we do, so is he familiar with what Sibolo may be looking? I mean, other, I know Mark, uh, our mayor wants to, um, have a specific list, but, I mean, paying someone fifty thousand dollars when we're kinda short on a budget to begin with, um, who doesn't even know Texas or Sibolo, period, um, kinda seems out of the rim of possibilities at the moment? But, I mean, I would just have to know his qualifications, basically, make sure that he knows what we are.
I personally haven't spoken to Mr. Lane, uh, I, I don't know if, I assume that Mr. Hicks or Mr. Sanchez Stevens has spoken with him.
I've spoken to him multiple times, I mean, he seems, um, upfront about everything that he, he, he talked to us about, but, I'm with the mayor, I mean, get, get a list and find out, you know, if there's other projects, because, uh, what I was looking at is to enhance the ball fills. But, um, you know.
Again, he can't guarantee anything, so there's no guaranteed return on investment on this situation.
Yeah, and I think that because of the flooding that just happened nearby, I, I know that the federal government and the state of Texas, they're, they're putting that on their agenda for the special session, and so I've got a feeling that there will be some matching programs that'll help us with flood, you know? Making, making it as to where, you know, if, if a flood were to, were to come, that we've got it all, you know?
So flood mitigation, right?
Mitig- exactly, there you go. Thank you.
There's about six or eight bills, yeah, that were.
Yep, yeah, so, so now's the time to strike on that, you know, just to get our plans together and ask for some money.
Well, I can also ask, ask Mr. Roberts if, uh, he has any experience working with other entities within the state of, of Texas in this area. You're welcome. So, we're gonna go to, uh, council direction and feedback, um, this ends our presentation, uh, for this evening, and so really just looking for, uh, some feedback from council on these specific type topics. Um, you know, do you support the, uh, projects, and, uh, I think you already asked, we already asked you that question on the E D C stuff, and there were no comments or?
Yeah, that, these make sense, I mean, we, yeah, we already said yes on the E D C and the two percent, I don't think we really have a choice, you know, we're, we're, we're being voluntold to raise our rates to accommodate that. The third bullet point seems to make sense.
I do just want a clarification, um, the hundred thousand dollars for consultant for services regarding water acquisition, is this the, like, going along with the current consulting that we have with L R E?
No, ma'am, at, at the hundred thousand dollar, uh, rate, we'd have to go back out to, uh, request for quotes.
Yeah, that, that's what Fuus was doing for us.
It was kind of going in the same thing, okay, thank you.
They'd be doing the same type of work, but we'd have to open it up and, and see who comes back and provides the best quote for us.
That's one of the things that I tasked Fuus with, was to go find us water, you know, for the next ten to thirty years. And now that he's gone, we'll have to have someone else.
Uh, the last one, Mr. Mayor, is explore the modification of drainage fees based on the, the surface material, that was Mr. Wood's proposal, I, doesn't, any comments on that, or? Gonna move on like we've, we've been working on.
Yeah, if anything, I would say we'll have to raise them, because we're operating at a loss on that fund, you know, and that's just not sustainable. So, I don't think that there would be any, you know, economic reasons to change it.
I disagree with that, and, and the simple fact that, I mean, we take other businesses into consideration when we're doing certain, um, variances or whatever. So why could we not, based on revenue or whatever, that, cause we can't go tell a business owner, yeah, we know your business is a good place, this is sell it, that's not, you know, that's not in his plan, that's not his plan. So why can we not try to figure out something based on a business perspective? I mean, that can help our small businesses operate here in Sibolo and keep them here in Sibolo, just, I mean.
I agree.
Cause, cause when you make that, cause when you make that, it's gonna go across the board, you can't just do it for one purpose.
That's fine, I think that we should look at it, we've had multiple small businesses come to us individually saying that they are trying to come to Sibolo, and the impact fees and the, the fees that we have for building in Sibolo are outrageous. Right, I'm talking about everything, though, cause that feeds into this as well, this is ongoing fees. And I understand that people may think that the spot where that storage unit is, is prime property, and we could put all sorts of things there. That's not our decision, flat out, they've been there way longer than any of the growth in Sibolo has been here. That's not our decision, people have property rights for a reason. We don't get to just take it or make it so unbearable that they don't wanna be there anymore, that's not how it works. We're a free country, we're a free city, people get to build what they want, where they want, within reason, they've been there longer than we have, we don't get to decide that. We don't get to put up ten strip clubs around their business to make it so horrible for them to live there that they want to sell. That is wrong, that's authoritarian.
Mrs. Cunningham is, I mean, we've got these grants that we're giving the downtown businesses, that we're giving them free money, I understand where it comes from, Mark, as a drainage, but, w- w- we help out other businesses, why can we not work at looking at?
So, so that's one thing that could be done, I mean, I mean, I know that the EDC grants, they have to do with improvements like a sign or something like that, like they just did the Nolley's veto sign, you know? And so, that's something that is permanent.
Right.
But, maybe to change that grant a little bit to make it a little more flexible, that might be an idea.
We do these three eighty agreements with big businesses all the time. How many dollars, millions of dollars in tax breaks did Walmart get? How many millions of dollars in breaks did HEV get? How many millions of dollars did Santicos and the Fasken Development get? All of these other big, they've also got it. So, we've done these deals with these big businesses in the name of, oh, we get sales tax back.
And those deals were in exchange for infrastructure improvements like Walmart did Borgfeld, you know?
They didn't get any, they just wanted to do it out of the goodness of their heart.
No, Fasken Oil did Wiederstein, which turned into Cibolo Valley. So, therefore, these are our deals that bring infrastructure our way.
They do bring infrastructure and so the city does get a benefit, but they also get the benefit. Businesses don't just, it's not a, it's not a criticism of the businesses for doing a three eighty agreement. We are getting something in return and they are businesses. They are not going to just be generous and say, you know what, let me go ahead and put all this stuff in, just for the benefit of Cibolo, just out of the goodness of my, it helps their customers and if they have customers, what do they get?
More business.
More business, there you go. So, it's not just out of the, it's not out of the goodness of their heart that they're doing it with no benefit to them. So, that's what I'm trying to say is that we give all, we do all these deals and these special agreements with larger businesses. Why can we not, why would we not look at what we're doing, what we can do for smaller businesses? Storage units don't make that much money and I, when we have that storage unit come and want to go in on Wiederstein, I raised the concern that we don't get much sales tax from that. We only get sales tax from the storage of vehicles and RVs. And even then, it's minimal. So, we don't get, we don't get a lot of tax from these facilities, but that doesn't mean that they're less worthy. These people have been here longer than you have, been longer than a lot of us have.
What's that have to do with anything?
We cannot, we should not be making it a practice to make things difficult for people just because we don't, one, like the business, two, feel that that.
These are costs that we're.
These are comments that I heard up here.
These are costs we have to pay. Did you, did you look at the slide with the expenses for the drainage?
I walked in.
We're operating at a loss.
I walked in late and did not see that slide. I will look back at it, but that doesn't make a difference in what I'm saying. I'm saying we should look into it and see what can we do? Are there any solutions? Can we offer a temporary stay on that?
That's really the question at hand right now is can we, you support us exploring the modification of this?
Yes, I do.
I say yes, because, I mean, this is how I look at it. If we're helping the small towns in downtown, you know, by giving them grants, they'll apply for it and we're helping them out, why can we not find a way to help other businesses out? That's.
We can look into some possible modifications to the drainage fees and bring you back some, a proposal to say this is a possibility. Would y'all consider that at a future meeting if y'all are good with that?
That would be great. Or even if it's not a permanent modification, but if there's cities that do like a temporary waiver, you can have a three-year waiver or whatever it might be. I don't know what that would look like, but a temporary.
Or a three-year cap.
Yes, kind of like the EDC grant or up to a certain amount of money where we're not giving them money for a grant, but we're giving something else in exchange for the same or similar value.
I'm not sure if maybe something that could be considered is maybe tiering these businesses based on land use categories, realizing that minimal traffic that's being, that minimal traffic is going through, what is a, is it a low runoff volume and so forth? There's just other considerations that I think we should probably consider based on the way the land itself is being used. So, maybe a tier basis. I'm pretty sure, I'm not sure, towing company. Can you just kind of educate me a little bit on our road running or towing? What does that land look like?
They are, went back to shirts because they had so much trouble with Mr. Mox. So, they're not.
Well, let's say, for instance, in the future, if a business like that were to come back in, if they were to have this type of, of.
They would have likely the same type of.
Exactly, they would have this Palici, exactly. So, would we be also imposing these impervious fees to a business like that in the future would like to come in? So, I think, I think it needs to be proportional based on the way that land is being used as well. This is not heavy retail and I think maybe something like that should be considered. Maybe other cities have a tier already that we can look at to see how they calculate those things.
We'll look at, see some other cities and see what they have.
Well, he also had mentioned that we were giving them a discount for having the water run, have it graded to run back off on his property instead of running into our drainage systems. And he said for, you know, that started in eleven and he said that he hadn't been getting it for a few years.
I think that's an arrangement he made with Mr. Pearson, with Mr. Pearson, with city manager back in twenty-eleven, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, and that's what I'm saying.
So, it's been a while, right? But, that's something that they did back then. So, that's something that, you know.
Well, I mean, if you think about it, it's water that's, that would be going into our drainage systems that our people would have to be taking care of. He's having to just go run back off onto his property. So, I mean, yeah, I can see where we should be giving them some type of discount because he's not having his drainage come into our drainage. It's going back onto his property.
Okay, we'll look at some options. Bring it back to you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on.
The overall consensus was yes, let's look at it.
Yeah, to take a look at it, yeah, to bring back some options.
Okay, regarding the special revenue funds, does council support, general fund support of thirty thousand dollars for Cibolo Fest?
And that includes raising the wristbands to ten bucks, right, instead of five?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And that'll make it a break even proposition?
Yes.
Okay. I'm fine with that. What do y'all think?
It's kind of pricey, just if you have a lot of kids. I know one of the draws for Cibolo Fest is that it's great for families that have a lot of kids and not a lot of income. I understand the need to raise prices, but it kind of makes me sad.
We could consider buy three, get one free or something.
That might be, that might be good, or like a family pack or something. No, I'm not talking about me. I'm talking about families and from Cibolo and the surrounding communities. It is, when you go to our sister cities event, those wristbands are like twenty-five, thirty bucks. Those are expensive.
Yeah, it was twenty-five inch for the thing in church.
Yeah, so, and that's why we don't go that often. Ten is a lot cheaper, but five was a lot cheaper too. So, we're talking about doubling it. And I know it's just five bucks and it doesn't seem like a lot, but I grew up in a house with six kids.
I had, I remember, I had five teenagers at one time and, I mean, they had to share drinks together.
And the amount that they eat, I mean, just trying to keep up with keeping children fed is ridiculous. Just wrapping around all their wrists.
Nothing's cheap anymore, right? All right.
I have, I do have one quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
We are, we do charge for vendors, correct? And is that included as part of the thirty thousand dollars, the vendor cost per se of what they are charged to have a spot at Cibolo Fest? Or is that something separate?
The booth rentals?
Glad you brought that up. I got a question on that.
There's not an increase proposed for the booth rentals. I actually don't know what the, what the individual cost is. I think we make approximately ten thousand dollars in booth rentals.
That's what I thought.
In booth rentals? No, it was in sponsorships, you had forty-five thousand in sponsorships.
No, 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 forty-five dollars per.
Oh, forty-five dollars.
I get.
I think that sounds right to me. It was between forty-five and sixty dollars.
I've got. I know vendors that would, would, would pay the, to have a preferred spot. And we need to look at that, you know, the preferred spots would be these end caps.
They'll charge a higher fee for the.
A premium.
Sixty-five dollars or something along those lines.
Well.
It's, it's.
Well, I would say more than that because they said they'd be willing to pay up to a hundred dollars.
You got a proposal?
Well, they said that, but whatever we come up with, we need to stick with.
I agree. I just said if you have a recommendation, I want that fee to be.
I don't. Right. You know, if they're willing to pay the seventy-five dollars for the preferred spot.
We can see how it goes.
You know, and we need to look at the map as to how y'all map it out and then find those preferred spots on the ends and then put a higher price tag because I was told by some downtown businesses that they'd, they'd be willing to pay the premium, pay a premium price to have a spot, you know, where spotlight spot. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir. Good idea?
I heard the same thing, yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, and on this next one, street maintenance of only seven hundred and fifty thousand, I'd like to see that at a million myself.
Well, I think we're working toward a million, Mayor.
Four million?
No, we're working up to the million.
Even better.
Four million.
Julio would love to have four million. Yes, sir.
Four million is what we had discussed needing, but we're not anywhere near that. But, I know we were working up to a million there way back.
There's a plan to get to the one million. We're just asking for the seven fifty this year.
I just have a question real quick. Is our neighborhood management program also being funded by the street maintenance fund? Because I know this past January, we were supposed to get a list of neighborhoods that were, that had applied and we never got to see that presentation. I just kind of know where are we on that just as well?
Sure, that's a great question. So, Mr. Gomez can provide that list. We looked through the list of recommendations and there was not really any, correct me if I'm wrong, Julio, but there was not really any one specific neighborhood management traffic program request that met the criteria that we were looking for to upgrade some of those issues, correct?
Yes, so, some of, when we're receiving the NTMPs, a lot of the ones that we're receiving originally were not NTMP requests. They're more just, there were questions about stop sign being repaired or stuff like that. We did have one request and we do have the information from the resident, I forgot her name, but we are looking into that one and it was a blind spot that's coming off of Bentwood Pass, I mean, a Bentwood ramp.
Well, I know Bison Lane in Buffalo Crossing, I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure she submitted, someone on Bison submitted it. I'll follow up with her. But, that one has been requesting speed bumps or cushions or something to that road right by the park. Can, when you send that list or when you get requests for the NTMP, could you CC the council person for that district and, or all of us or whatever, so that we can kind of follow up with it too?
We'll send.
Because we're asking, like, the process has changed. The NTMP project that we did in Buffalo Crossing, on Buffalo Crossing, they came to me and then I worked with Mr. Reed to do the town halls for that and we did that together. This new system is very much resident initiated and they don't know what they're asking for. They don't know what they need to have on there. And a lot of times I know that they're, we're directing them there because that is what we were told the process was. So, I'm directing them to the website, but I don't know what happens after they submit.
You know, I think we can, we can do a presentation next month, maybe the second meeting in August, an update on the NTMP. And then, Mr. Gomez can explain the process now so that everybody gets refreshed on how it works.
Okay.
But, to go back to your question, Ms. Sanchez Stevens, as far as if there was a request for lit stop signs or something along those lines, that doesn't come out of the street maintenance fund, does it? Or?
No. Those, so those are the flashing stop signs and that, those are NTMP requests and we do evaluate those.
But, where does the funding come from is the question.
So, we don't have a funding source for that right now. That's, so that's part of, last year when we created the NTMP, we said we would come back to council this year to see what council would want to allocate for NTMP projects. But, we don't have an actual funding source for the NTMP, for those types of projects. Now, currently what we do is if it is a sign issue, we'll use our sign budget for that or if it's a street issue, we'll use our street funding for that. But, currently right now, we don't have a funding source specifically for NTMP projects.
Mr. Gomez, I know that on the AMPO project included twelve crosswalks enhancements. Would that be part of, you know, enhancing those crosswalks to where they're lit up or something? Yep.
Yeah, so, so the upgrade of those improved crosswalks, those are just primarily to bring those up to ADA standard. So, we do have a lot of ADA ramps in Cibolo that are now up to current standards. So, the twelve that we identified for the NTMP or for the AMPO project are sidewalks that we're going to enhance to bring them up to current standards. Now, we do have, we did get three of those flashing signs, the crosswalk signs through ARPA funding that we have and we're going to use two of those locations, one for the senior center crossing and then the other one, we're going to identify a location on Main Street, I believe. I believe it was you that requested something on Main Street that needed to have that sign. So, we have those two signs, we're waiting for the rest of the parks to come in for that. And then, we do have an additional set that we have to identify a location to utilize the flashing signs.
Okay. Next up, fund parks and rec commission new events, six thousand six hundred bucks? Okay, and this has to do with what we just approved at the last meeting?
Yes, sir, and this is just, this is really good.
Fun run and all that, okay.
Yes, sir, it's the same thing. It's just talking about taking it from the Cibolo Public Facility Corporation fund.
Okay, so, we're still good with that, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, next, fund phase two for the Noble Group. This is in addition to what we were already working on as far as.
So, phase one is the big event room for the senior program. Phase two is the office space for personnel.
Yeah, to make it offices and all that, okay. Everybody good with that?
Yes, sir.
Sort of a floor plan, something about a big TV right in the entrance foyer.
Yeah.
And immediately I thought, uh-oh, do I need to go through this and start X-ing things because that seems like, I don't know the purpose why there's a need for that and is that a, is that a thousand dollar expense that we could trim off and spend it another way?
That's a Walmart, two eighty-eight special.
Yeah, we can, we can buy a bonus.
They are cheap now.
What, usually, usually on that, it's, that'll be the lobby, the main lobby for the building coming in.
Fifty-five bucks.
We'd have scrolling screens on that, talking about job opportunities, career opportunities, different things within the city.
Council meetings that are happening, budget meetings that are happening.
I can see it, but I can see in that little lobby, I don't, we don't need something as big as these.
No, no, it would not be that big.
So, I just want to drill down and save a few dollars somehow.
Yes, sir, we're not going to put a ten thousand dollar TV up there, that's for sure.
I know.
They're cheap now.
Yeah, I mean, we can get, we can get a pretty good rate on a TV nowadays.
It's regardless whether it's cheap, is it a good look for the space? I don't, I'm not a designer, not going to claim to be an interior decorator, but sometimes I think we get. Yeah, we get a little bulky with gadgetry sometimes and being all techno and modern, I don't know if it's a good look, but just my feeling. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.